We call the March 24th meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. First of all, I would like to ask, we take a moment of silence, a moment of reflection, and I hope that we'll keep our first responders and fire rescue police and all of those that are out in the public doing the jobs that they do so well. And also, any families that may be affected at this time or for future families. Hopefully, we have none. Thank you. I would like to ask for the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask Councilman Steve Huffer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a unique situation for us at this point. We've not had to meet and arrange things like this, but I would assume until we know any different, this will be the way of the future for us with the being able to separate and keep space in between everyone. Are there any adjustments to our agenda? We have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. Our consent agenda, the approval of the minutes of the March 23rd, 2020, and March 10, 2020 minutes. We need to schedule a public hearing on May 12. Resigned request Golden Triangle LLC, two-acre tract, tax map 530-2-87C, located north of Gate Drive, I'm sorry, Glade Drive southeast and south of Interstate 81, adjacent to Reagan Point subdivision. Requested to reserve the property from A Agriculture to R3 multifamily residential. This property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Next is to schedule a public hearing, May 12, 2020. Conditional use, contingent on the preceding request to amend the approved planned housing development Reagan's Point subdivision. Request is to modify the approved development plan in order to allow nine additional single-family dwellings to be constructed within the development, a portion of which will be located on tax map 530-2-87C in the R3 multifamily residential district. The property is designated residential in the future land use map and D is payment of the monthly bills.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second. Got a motion and a second? Any discussions? Madam Plurk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Huffer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is unanimous vote. Introductions and presentations, we have Michael St. Jean, who is the Executive Director of Virginia Tech Airport. He's going to present on the operations via teleconference.
Before, if I may, is he muted? Or, Michael, are you on?
I'm on now. Can you all hear me?
Yes, and I want to say just a few words about Mr. St. Jean. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. St. Jean for, what would you say, Michael, maybe 12 years, something like that, maybe 15, somewhere in that neighborhood?
Yes, yeah, that was correct, yes, sir.
And we're very fortunate to have Mr. St. Jean here. He has been here since the formation of the Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Airport, and he is retiring in May. And I know with the crisis around and so forth, but there has been some questions about the airport, and Mr. St. Jean has made himself available for this presentation. And in advance of this, it will be a 10-minute presentation. I assured that that's what it's going to be. And so, I'd like to ask the respect of letting him finish the presentation first and save your questions for the end. And also, Mr. St. Jean gave me copies to give to each of you at your desk, which is the General Assembly action that formed the Airport Authority in 2001. So, that is at your desk. And without further ado, Mr. St. Jean.
Mr. Stipes, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council, I'd like to, on behalf of the Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Airport Authority, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to take an opportunity to update you on the status of the airport this evening. This evening, I'll go over qualitative and quantitative information of the airport, where we've been, where we're going. And I think Andrew's working the screen, so Andrew, if you could scroll down to program. Tonight's program will be a brief review of the structure, vision statement, economic development, and this is the tool of the airport, financial aspects, capital projects, and funding requests. The structure of the airport was created in 2001 by the Virginia Legislature. The act of legislative took the four entities, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Montgomery County, and Virginia Tech, and created a regional airport authority as it is a structure of law. So, the airport authority has the rights and powers of police actions of any entities, of any government entity in the Commonwealth. We have the right of taxation. We have the right of eminent domain. We have the right to do what these do. So, we are a legislative structure, and it is made up of those four entities. The next slide down, mission statement, is the core values of this airport, and we follow this stringically. Many organizations have a mission statement, but they put it up on a shelf or they use it occasionally. We do follow this in the corporate, and third sentence down, the mission of servicing corporate executive markets, obtaining grants and other funding for airport improvements, and promoting and assisting in regional economic development. This is our reason for being. Underneath that, the next screen is the vision statement, and this is where we have the pride in our facility. We do provide a self-well-maintained transportation facility. We envision a community that has pride and share of what recognizes its economic value, and the value is accomplished by increasing airport utilization, true infrastructure development, but critical to this is sound business practices. Historically, the airport prior to the formation of the airport, prior to the formation of the authority, was known as a, was Virginia Tech's airport, and basically, it was an airport for the light recreational people to fly around. Right now, throughout the Commonwealth and in Washington, it is a vital transportation ring. We have excellent operational systems. Our infrastructure development, which I will move on in a couple of minutes, is very high. We have brand recognition, safety is our motto, and again, back to an economic development tool. Understanding the mission. If I asked 100 people what an airport is, I'll get 100 different responses, but by and large, an airport is an on-and-off ramp for the national transportation system. Think of the airport as exit 114, you know, people coming into the community and leaving the community. It is a platform, and it includes import and export of manufacturing, education, research, recreation, tourism, and commercial services. Economic activity is, you know, we connect to funding and venture capital coming into the community for growth. We bring in outside expertise. We develop community partnership. For example, in this particular case, the airport authority is a community partnership, and attracts clients, the people who come here to the New River Valley. The next screen down, Andrew, is operational revenue sources. And this is an interesting slide, in that number two, car parking, a lot of people are not aware of that when you go to a commercial service airport or an airport that has airline service, their number two revenue stream is usually car parking. And ironically, it is the same thing at the Virginia Tech Montgomery Executive Airport. We take advantage of our location to accommodate car parking for people who go to other football games. Over the years, since 2008, the airport had generated $993,000 just for parking cars. That's money that we have generated ourselves to assist in the economic, infrastructure development. When I first got here, fuel sales hovered around $400,000. There was no car parking. There was no property leases, and there were no hangar rentals, well, perhaps $15,000. So, we have looked for many different ways to generate revenue for the airport. Next screen shows the operational record of the airport. Now, there are 59 general aviation airports in the Commonwealth. There is but one of those airports, which is Manassas, that generates sufficient revenue to offset all their expenses, to include capital. The reason for that is they have over 500-based aircraft. They have the FBI, the CIA, DEQ, and all of the other alphabets up there based at that aircraft. They have an air traffic control tower, twin runways, and they're a reliever for national and Dallas. So, that's the reason that they're so large. What I want to point out in this screen is if you look at the bottom line, there's a gray line that runs straight across from 2009 to 2019 at the $200,000 level. That $200,000 that's remained flat, actually, since 2002, that is the sponsors' contribution that has given us, that has been given us over the years. The next line up, the brown line, if you look at the operational revenue, you see reflectively it does trend upward, and then the blue line is my expenses. So, there's a common trend going upward. So, by going down to the next screen, Andrew, when you take the $200,000 that the four entities have given us, and you apply that to the operational revenue line or the orange line, you get the yellow line. And it is because of that information, of that additional money, that the airport, in some years, has been able to post a profit. So, in those years, when we don't have a profit, we have the chain earnings that we can use to offset our budget. Next screen down is a graph going from back from 2016 to 2019. This is just a snapshot of the direction that the airport is going. In 2016, we had 156 jet visitors to the airport. So, these are just people who come in and land and take off in one day or however long they stay. And as you can see, the trend analysis shows that in 2019, we have 410. This goes back to the airport being a destination for economic development. More and more people come in to visit this area, to visit Montgomery County, Christiansburg, Blacksburg, Virginia Tech, or the New River Valley in whole. So, collectively, the entire community takes advantage of all of these people visiting. Now, over the years, since 2013, the Federal Aviation Administration, coupled with the Virginia Department of Aviation, have recognized the value of this airport. And by doing that, they have pumped $53 million of transportation trust fund money into the community, into this airport. Over that same period of time, the $200,000 given annually by all sponsors has reached 3.8 billion. So, for every dollar that the community puts into this airport, it has been leveraged $13.95 of the federal and state money. So, for example, the runway extension is 20 million. I hope I'm not running out of time here. The runway benefits of cost is increased usage by national companies, national presence, and assistance in economic development. Upcoming projects will be a new fuel fund. Now, the Virginia Department of Aviation assists the airport in many projects. They'll pay 80% of a project in the airport from its own pockets, has to pay 20%. But in the situation of a fuel fund, the Virginia Department of Aviation will only assist us $175,000, whereas the remaining of that money must come from the pockets of the airport. Now, since we've got a airport fuel system that was built 40 years ago, we're at a critical point, or a critical juncture, that we need to look at how we can quickly upgrade into a new fuel system to handle the increased jet traffic or upper traffic that's coming in. We also have an April rehabilitation project inbound upcoming, and that's going to be what is known as airport improvement funds. The Federal Aviation Administration will fund 90% of that. The Virginia Department of Aviation will pay 8% and 2% that come from the pockets of the airport. And airport expansion, a new maintenance facility, that's a state local share. The state will only give us $100,000. So, $300,000 of that comes from the pockets of the airport authority, and we need to update our airport radar. The next screen shows a snapshot of the airport. Up to the top right, where there's, you can see a term of expansion of 2,000 feet in the harbor. Again, in the middle of the screen, you have two green boxes, both are upper hangings, those are already in place, and the green rectangle off to the left, that's currently in place, and then we have room for additional hangar space where we generate sufficient, we generate revenue. Now, a lot of people ask the question, well, why am I having to pay a general fund, my tax dollars, to an airport? Well, airport funding comes from a dedicated transportation trust fund, and that trust fund is funded not from the general fund of the government, but from domestic ticket tax, from passenger segment tax, from taxes on jet fuel and aviation fuel. So, if you're not flying, if you're not mailing anything, or if you're not traveling at all, then you haven't invested at all in supporting the aviation. So, that's where that comes from. The state of Virginia has a similar program for that. I think I came in under my 10 minutes, usually take a little bit longer, but that completes my presentation for this evening, and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michael.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
The runway expansion, how much has that helped? I mean, how bigger planes can fly in and out now?
That's a great question. Right now, in aircraft, the jets landing usually have about an eight to 10 passenger capacity. The corporate jets that will be coming in will be having anywhere between an 18 and 20 passenger capacity. Now, the organizations that own those type of aircraft are usually what we refer to as the C-suite executives. These are the CEOs, and CFOs, and COOs of companies that have 250, 350, 500 people that would like to come in and relocate to the New River Valley. At that critical juncture though, sir, when a jet that large comes in now, which they do, unfortunately, the runway is too short for them to buy any fuel. So, with a longer runway, the larger jets will be able to purchase fuel, fly to California. That will increase the airport's bottom line. I hope that makes sense.
How much longer is the runway now?
Right now, we're at 4,500. We will go up to 5,500 feet.
Thank you.
To go back to your first, to go back to the first question, the airport will be able to support a those strings five?
Sir, what is the amount of Christiansburg citizens that use the airport to bring businesses to the town of Christiansburg?
Could you repeat that? I didn't quite catch that, ma'am.
Yes, what is the amount of Christiansburg citizens that use the airport to bring businesses to the town of Christiansburg?
Okay, I'm trying to, I'm trying to hear. Are you asking who uses the airport coming to Christiansburg?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's a great question, and, you know, I've often asked that question myself. We usually do not query people who come into the community to see which direction that they're going. But I do know that, just off the top of my head, people who do do business in Christiansburg or live in Christiansburg would include such as Burger King, Southern States, a couple of the banks, Corning Glasses, Belk, Waffle House, Sheeler. And so, there are a lot of people that come in, but we don't, I guess we don't question them as they come in. But there are enough people that come in where that money is being distributed through out the community. There are even people that come in just to go to the blocks, sir.
So, what you're saying too is that the majority of, we have people coming in that have businesses here in the town, but you also said that about, was it 80% the amount of people that come in just for tourism?
No, not 80%, but people do come in for tourism. They also come in and live here for the quality of life. They come in here for business. They come here for a number of different variants. We have a high quality of life. People want to live and work in this particular area.
But they don't necessarily live here in the town of Christiansburg, correct?
I cannot quantify that. Ma'am, no, I can't.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Michael, thank you very much. Always informative.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, sir, and I appreciate, thank you very much to the council. And if you all have any questions, please come to the airport at any time. I'd love to show you the facility.
I'd like to second what Brad said, you know. I've met you several times, and you're always got a great attitude, and I think the airport is probably, I really miss you. I hope the person who comes in to take your place knows that you've got some big shoes to fill.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Finance Director Val Tweedy to present the draft physical year 2021 budget. Val, where you want to be?
I don't know. You got that presentation? I don't know if I really need this. I'm usually pretty loud anyway.
Before you start, Valerie, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Who was the person that instructed you to include the park in the budget?
It was a member of the council.
Who was it?
I think it was Henry.
Henry Showalter?
So, I, all of you got this presentation via email last week, along with the draft copy of the budget. It is also up on the website. We do have a requirement to present the budget in open session, so I'm not going to belabor this too long, because I would think that most of you have probably already read through all of this. And as you know, this last week has been tumultuous, to say the least, with change happening at unprecedented speed. So, a lot of what, a week ago, we thought was good to put and leave in the budget as it was, may not be true today. So, clearly, we all need to have some conversation about where we're going down the road, what we can expect in our forecasts for the rest of this year, as well as going into next year. But I need to present to you what is in the packet, so that's what I'm going to proceed with, and hopefully, I'll cover some of the questions that you have already about the economic conditions and kind of where we're going and what we're doing. So, do we have the blipper?
Sir, do you want?
Yeah, I'll blip it if it's going to work.
I'm sure you can.
So, in the budget initially, we looked at what are our revenues that are the most sensitive to the economic conditions, which is meals, lodging, sales tax, and business license and occupational taxes. So, we initially cut those to 50% for the remainder of this year and 50% for the first four months in the forecast for 2021. Thought that was a pretty good number at that time. I'm not quite sure it's still true. We need to take another look at that and say, what do we really expect? You have before you this evening several items with respect to delaying some of those payments. So, as well as those numbers being down, there's also going to be a delay in those collections. So, we'll need to take a look at that. We reduced the sales tax numbers. We also reduced some of the retail license fees in next year's budget. Again, depending on how long this goes on, might be more or less than what we've projected. My crystal ball's full of smoke. I don't know about yours, but mine's not working at all. So, there's other, a lot of our other revenue sources are not that economic dependent. They come from the state. They come from communication taxes and utility tax and law enforcement funds and state highway funds, and streams of revenue that just aren't not quite as sensitive and will come in anyway. And then, of course, some of our grant funds. So, overall, the impact of 20% of our revenues coming from economically sensitive areas reduced our total revenues by about 5%. Probably, that number needs to come down a little bit more as far as our projections go, based on where we are today. Again, that could change in three weeks. So, proposed in there was water, according to the rate study that we had done back in 2017, there's an increase in water rates of a dollar on the minimum and a dollar for every thousand gallons thereafter. And of course, the out-of-town rates are 1.5% higher than in-town rates. And this is to cover the increasing water rates from the Water Authority, which is rebuilding and going into debt. So, that's what was scheduled. There's no increase in sewer rates, and no other revenue increases were proposed. Many of you will recall that a number of years ago, we put into place a fund balance policy that required that we keep 30% to 45% of the prior year's operating expenses of all funds available in an unassigned fund balance.
Can you circle in a moment?
Sure.
You went really quick through the water stuff. So, we're still going to give an increase to the water bills for everybody in the town of Christiansburg, and that's still, what can we put a freeze on that for now, since we're obviously not going to be having, probably, a lot of people are being affected by not having jobs and stuff like that, so now we're going to increase their water bills?
That is up for discussion, that we could seriously consider not putting that in this year, postponing it a year. It's definitely something that we could consider.
But Val, the authority is still going to do their increase?
Yes.
Which, if we don't do it, we're going to have to fund it out of the general fund problem, correct?
From an operating perspective, no, we'd still be able to cover it, but we wouldn't have enough to do some of the capital projects that we need to do.
Like what?
There's like four or five different water projects out there. We'd probably have to cut one of the water projects out of the budget, or at least delay it to see how revenues come in. Another alternative might be to, rather than doing both the dollar on the minimum and the dollar on per thousand gallons after the minimum, is to maybe just put the first dollar in, or the dollar on the gallons over the first thousand, and postpone the other increase to next year.
We got money saved up every year for different things. Right now, we've got money saved up for a park that is probably not going to be able to be used for a long time anyway. Can we use that money and just do some of the infrastructure that we need to fix the infrastructure instead of increasing deals right now for people?
That's up to you all to decide.
Listen, just the overall presentation. We'll have several more work sessions and meetings concerning the actual draft figures at this point, just to kind of give you where we are now in the odd rate. There's some things probably would have to be deleted from the projected budget.
Yes, definitely. Part of what I wanted to talk to you about here was this fund balance policy and the fact that because we put this policy in place a number of years ago, and we have adhered to this policy, not only do we have a fair amount of funds in assigned, saved up for different projects, for the park, for various other things, funds that have been set aside for specific future projects, we also have $15 million in unassigned fund balance. And I'll talk a little bit more about it in a minute, but even as this budget stands, it left us with still the 39.73% projected to be in the fund balance. So, we're still within that fund balance policy. We still have those reserves there. We have plenty of cash on hand. We are in a good financial position to weather this storm. I don't mind anybody to get all nervous about where we are cash-wise or financially. We are in a good position. That does not mean that we can just spend away. It just means we need to continue to be very prudent with how we expend those funds and what we do going forward, because we really don't know how long this is going to last. Uncharted waters for everybody.
Well, let me ask you something. Why are we still talking about park when... Why are we still talking about park when the park is not an essential service right now?
We're not talking about a park at this point in this presentation. That will come, that will come within our budget discussions.
Well, that will increase our debt to $24 million.
We haven't even voted to build the park.
You're the only one that's brought up the park this evening and it's not, as far as I'm concerned.
It's in there. It's being, it's coming up in every page in there I have seen.
Really? Okay, continue, please, Val.
So, with respect to the budget, department heads were given templates first week in January. They had till February 14th to turn in their requests. They were told to keep their budgets pretty flat. For the most part, in operational terms, they were pretty flat. Other than increases in salaries and wages that flowed through from the prior year's merit and then what's included in this budget for merit, budgets were really, really flat. There was some high numbers in some capitals. Those got reduced pretty quickly. Other ones that they did not have any control over, such as the NRV 911 Center, there was an overall increase in their funding request by $88,000. That gets spread between fire, police, rescue and EMS recovery funds. So, each of their budgets went up by $22,191. Total funding that we give to the NRV 911 Center is $899,664. There was also an increase in the funding requirement for Blacksburg Transit. Our annual funding to the transit is $401,668. So, overall, the operating expenditures as presented here were down 3.3%. I added an additional column just so you could see the original ask in the budget. So, when you're looking at the departmental expenses, watch which column you're looking at because the first column is the original ask that department heads had and then what is presented within the budget.
Real quick, is the 911 authority still divided equally amongst its members, Randy?
Correct, according to my understanding.
Yep.
When is the next time that's going to be up for review?
We don't really plan on discussing that. Basically, it's not really a topic of discussion right now. Where we are by the way, probably next year, but it'll probably be at least a year before we are by the way.
And I think we've had the rule in that is it had to be unanimous.
Correct.
So, the only way that formula will change is not a majority. It's not a supermajority. It's unanimous. So, any rates would be, have to have support of all four owners or participants or whatever jurisdictions, Montgomery, Virginia Tech, Christiansburg, Blacksburg.
For the 211 phone call, the calling system that we've got in place, is that something that we're going to be seeing charged somewhere that we have to pay in the budget? Or who is covering that cost?
It's in the budget.
It's just in the budget, the 211 number?
The 911 call center?
No, the 211 for the COVID-19, the emergency center.
Oh, I'm not sure. Who's covering that, Melissa? Do you know? The 211 for COVID? Who's covering the cost on that?
We're not funding it.
Yeah. I haven't seen any bill for it.
Randy, are the four different entities here, the fees are going up a little bit. I tell you, you guys are talking about it, about trying to keep it somewhat under control?
Correct. They did basically hire two new dispatchers because of the workload there, the volume. And that's a big part of the reason for the increases. Also, they are going to have to change to what's called NG 911, which is next generation 911. They'll have to be able to take text. They'll have to be able to take video, user state mandates. So, it will require software upgrades.
You're letting two of them have the $1 million software?
Not with us.
That's 911.
This will be, and that'll reflect next year in their budget.
Yeah.
Their costs will go up.
Yeah, depending on how much state funding or other funding they get for it, but you know.
Well, it's been going up steadily for years. And we just got lucky that when it was up for review last year, the year before, because they were looking for Christiansburg to pay more than our fellow members due to our call volume or their received call, call debt of our call volume.
Fringe rates, that was kind of an up and down. Last year, we held contributions for the medical plan steady, even though we had an increase in our medical insurance costs. It did pay off. Our projected costs for this year were down. But now with COVID ID, they're saying they might go back up again. So, that I can't blame on the membership. That's really a result of what's happening nationwide. So far, we haven't really seen much of an increase in claims because we are self-funded. The dollar load that I'm seeing going out on a regular basis has not really gone up in the last few weeks. So, but who knows where we're going. VRS also decided to reduce their expected return on investments. And so, they increased our VRS contribution rate from 11.2 to 12.3. No control over that one either. But overall, the fridge rate's down about 0.76, but part of that's just because it's spread over a little larger salary base. Travel and school budgets were down as compared to last year. We talked about salary increases overall, their study. Again, included in here was the comp plan to stabilize public works. Alicia Diles, our new HR director, did a lot of work on that. Got it to around 281,000 with fringe at 106. And then, we also proposed that we keep the merit pool in there at 2%. Again, these are all items that will be up for discussion when we go into the next draft. And we all look at our cloudy crystal balls. There were some questions about the marketing funds. I'm not going to go through all this, but I just wanted to put the numbers out there for you. I think you've all had a chance to read through those. Obviously, I've seen some of the emails regarding community support. That's probably a discussion that you want to have in light of the change in economic decisions. If you want me to send the tally sheets out again, I can do that. Or would you rather just have a discussion?
Let's talk about it.
I'd say send it out and tally it again.
Do a new tally sheet?
That saves a lot of, that saves a lot of interaction. And then, you can still change your position, but I'd say the tally is tidy.
I personally think everybody should relook at this all over again and think about what is a necessity right now, at least for this year. And we can always revisit it next year and the years after that. But I think this year, it's, we have to be concerned about what is going on around us right now. And our citizens need us and they need, we need every penny that we can to be able to help our citizens right now. I think this is going to get a lot worse than what it is right now.
I think that's what we just said. And we're going to revisit this with a tally.
I'll send the tally sheets out again if everybody would send it back.
The only thing I don't like about tally sheet, we had to do yes or no. And I like, like the museum, I think. Last year, they asked for $18,000 and this year, they're asking for $20,000. Well, I would like to give them the 18 again, but I'm not willing to give them the 20. So, I mean, if I put down no, that means we're not going to give any money to the museum. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? I would just like to be able to say, to budget, you know? I mean, hey, we're only going to give you 18, you know? But we still want to support you.
Well, see, the new tally sheet will show, I think the museum will be kicked out at this point.
Yeah, because if that is a necessity, we need to look at what is a necessity and what is a...
Can you go back one side, please? So, Janet, you pretty much commented on everything else. What about, what about the proposed adjustment compensation and the merit pool of 2%? For the employees?
Right now, I think we shouldn't even increase it. But that's, that to me is something that I think we're going to have so many people on it for right now. I don't think we're going to have this budget that we got. There is not a projected effect that I see in the budgets of today. The projected effect that this is going to have in our budget, I think is going to be huge. I don't think people are going to be able to even pay real estate taxes in the next two, three, two months.
So, initially, you don't believe that we should do any increase in the compensation or the merit?
For the public works people?
Well, how it works, I think we have to look at it case-to-case scenario right now. But I think with everything that is going on, I think everything has to be discussed.
Okay, thanks, Val.
So, the original requests for capital were cut by about $5.4 million. Prelimarily, we included the $9 million for the park and the debt as well as some debt payments in the current year budget, in the 21 budget as well as in the forecast. I think we all know that's probably not a good plan. We would also propose that all the capital that's presented in the budget right now is pretty much, we leave it there, but we put it on hold, that no capital gets acquired until we kind of see where things fall out in the fall. Now, there's a few items like, that'll have to continue, that we just can't stop them. We've got, I think, two trucks that are on order that won't come until July. We're already committed to those. The fire truck was ordered, I think, in August of last year. So, but it's not committed to be here till September. But we have already committed to those acquisitions and there's not really...
We have those...
Although, I suppose legally, there are some ways we can back out of those things.
Well...
Depends on the contract.
That's a separate revenue stream, though. That's separate from the emergency service? No, that's rescue squad. That's revenue recovery. Yeah, right.
Are these fire trucks, I know Hanks, I saw him a minute ago, but I guess he left. Marcyson, can you answer this to me? As far as with everything that's going on right now, do you think the fire trucks are actually necessary? I personally think they will be a necessity, but...
I absolutely have no clue about fire truck operation. I can't answer that.
With everything that's going on with the COVID-19, do you think they are equipped?
Bring him in.
Well, I think the capital equipment, unless it's already on order, it's going to be on hold until September. My only question would be, whether this be a budget amendment, all these delays you're talking about? So, it's just not automatic. I know it's a little bit of extra work on council. But whether it come back before council, even through a public hearing, when things straighten out, instead of just being approved within the budget and then just happens like that? I would rather it come back when it works.
We have Chief Hanks at the door, please.
Mr. Hanks?
Yes.
I know with everything that is going on with the COVID-19 and everything else and the fire trucks that are, that are in the process of being built and everything, are they equipped to do anything right now for the COVID-19, things that we're dealing with right now?
A fire truck would not have anything to do with the virus that's going on.
Yeah, so there is not even no equipment in there that would be able to help save a life, correct?
Other than a fire truck.
Unless you got somebody in a house and it's on fire.
Yeah, a fire truck's made for fire suppression. We're replacing a 1988 model that parks are no longer available for. We have pushed this truck back for 10 years. This truck needs to be purchased, even with everything that's going on. It was already appropriated in last year's budget. We have to roll, we have to roll that money over because it takes, the estimated time to build a truck is 15 months. They reduced that now. We should get it in September because the production has been increased. But, you know, a fire truck is made for fire suppression, fire protection. It doesn't have any life-saving equipment on it except fire firing and breathing apparatus to get somebody out of a structure if it's on fire. Chief Hanks, this is the ladder truck, correct? It's the ladder truck, correct.
I would disagree. I think fire trucks do save lives.
No, obviously, they do. But you know what I mean? I'm talking about the COVID-19, the virus right now.
COVID-19 in fire.
I had a house that caught on fire, Henry. I understand.
I understand that, yeah. That's a tough question as, is a fire truck related to COVID-19? It's not.
Yeah, I was asking him about COVID-19. Thank you so much.
Val, what you got?
So, this is just the summary of where the funds are coming in, what the expectation is. So, based on expectations of revenue for this fiscal year, we would expect our fund balance to be somewhere around 19.9. We carry that into this year. And with what we have budgeted, we would expect at the end of the year to be at about 14.9, assuming that we did all of the capital and all the other things, which we've already talked about briefly, that some of that stuff's just not going to happen. So, this would always change. So, that's just a summary of that. And we're just kind of showing you, so at the beginning of the year, we're at 53% in accordance with our fund balance policy. And at the end of the year projection, we're at 39.73.
Capital budget.
Well, luckily, she's the under. I'm sorry.
Back up a page so she can see what we have there. Capital budget expenditures, we talked about the 911.
It's supposed to be in, are you in the budget document or the presentation?
The small presentation.
I'm on the project.
The presentation.
The presentation still?
Yeah. But then just get a little page that's in your budget. Yeah, there you go.
Sorry.
That's all right. Okay. So, any questions on kind of how that was, what that looks like?
It's a very good presentation so far.
So, I want to, first thing I like to say is how you have already put in that our meals and hotel taxes are going to be down and we already realize that. And you're not going to be telling us next December, hey, it's not there. You've already tried to work it in a little bit.
Yeah, and I think we have to do some more work on that. I think those numbers are probably going to come down at least for this year and probably a little bit into next year. So, in the next draft, these, some of these numbers are just going to come down in terms of revenue, which means some other things got to go too. So, recognizing that, we'll move on to the next draft after tonight. So, this is just a quick pie chart. These will all be in every draft that we give you of the budget so that you can kind of see where the whole thing is moving in total. And that's why I wanted to point out these percentages here. This 53% is where we expect to be at the beginning of the next fiscal year. And then, based on the budget numbers, this percentage is where we expect that fund balance to be at the end of the year, which is just to demonstrate to you that we're within our policy and what we need to do within our fund balance policy.
I have to ask one question. I'll save it to the end, but it relates to this since you mentioned it twice. The policy that council adopted several years ago to make sure that we've got a buffer in there to handle such situations as this, what is the lower threshold of that to where it would actually, you know, affect your bond rating and things like that?
At, we're saying at 30%. That's getting below, because the numbers were set based on operating expenses, not capital. What it takes us to operate for 90 days. So, if the faucets were turned off, how much cash would we need for 90 days?
Got you.
And that's where the 30% comes in. So, we have 30%. We're just getting at that point where we no longer have, we'll have just a tad over 90 days. At 35, you're at about 100 days. So, depending on what that percentage is, it's kind of the number of days of operating based on your projected revenues and expenses.
So, that's really a separate question for, that's really a separate question. And I wasn't implying anything other than just to know. But you've answered that question well, and that is, we have three months of operating expenses.
Pretty much.
I got you. Thank you.
And the 30, I started putting this 30 and 35 here because there was some discussion about moving that target. We always try to keep it at 35. And there was some discussion when we were talking about the park about what would it be if it was at 30? So, I had just started putting those two numbers there, what the required amount would be, just as an informational. And then, this is just a quick chart and graph and DPR. And DPR.
I see that.
It's the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Can you go back one second? So when you're talking about the excess of revenue over operating expenses, you're, you're already including the meal lodging, the, the, that money coming in, the aquatic being running right now, the rec center, which they're all closed right now. And so what is the projected effect that that's gonna have on this? I mean, that's gonna be huge.
It is in that number. This budget, before we cut the, the meals and lodging tax, that revenue, general fund revenue was around thirty-some million, close to thirty-one million dollars. We've already cut two and a half million dollars worth of revenue out of this budget, and I think we're gonna have to cut more. So, but that's where we were seven days ago, rapidly changing world. Um, so that's just a quick picture for you of what the pieces look like, where the money got, comes from. As you can see from here, if you take meals, taxes, thirteen and a half, and these are with the reduced numbers, but they didn't really change the percentages all that much when I reduced the numbers. They're still close to twenty percent of our revenue, um, in total. But thirteen and a half percent in meals, three point one in lodging, seven and a half in business license, um, and sales taxes, four percent. And I just added these three, because they're the, the really most sensitive. There's a lot of, um, D-Pole and franchise tax that is not that affected, like our bank franchise tax and stuff like that doesn't get hit as hard. Couple other franchise taxes that wouldn't be affected, but business license would be. So roughly twenty percent of the budget. Um, and then just a quick breakdown of where things are going. Obviously, the thirteen point nine in capital includes the nine million for the park. So you take that out and you, you drop that number down to about four point nine million. So where it goes. Um, so we have budget work sessions, I believe already scheduled for April seventh and twenty-first. If we do a water increase, and I think also May fifth, if we want to do a water increase, there has to be a public notice, um, and a public hearing. And the notice for that public hearing has to be twenty-one days ahead of time. So we would need to know where we're going with that water increase in early April to be able to put out the notices to have the public hearing by May the twelfth. Final budget and public hearing in late May on the budget. The notice on the budget is much less. It's a seven-day notice requirement. So, and then you have to wait seven days after a public hearing before you can vote on the budget. So we would vote hopefully in early June on the budget. I don't know if we want to look at a work session for next week or if we want our first work session to be April seventh. We'll already start doing some work on this, but until we presented the draft to you, we weren't going to go too much further. That's all I have.
Very nice.
When you put in there the trails and streets and capitals, which I know that you said that you put the park in there already, are you talking about just nine million dollars? Because the park is gonna cost over nine million dollars. You're really talking about the four, over four million dollars on the sale of the land, which the sale of the land won't take place until after the park is built, right?
Right. So the moving is really just a...
Nine million are looking at a...
A marker as to what we might do in the first year.
And that's, yeah.
The nine million is just a marker.
Yeah, so the state requires any town for any expense over ten million dollars to bring it out to the public. And so is that the reason why we're trying to keep it under the ten million mark?
No.
Marissa, um, I know that you have mentioned that the park was not an essential. Do you still believe that that's correct up to today?
Currently, yes. I think we have other priorities in this budget. And when I go through the budget myself and we hit a work session, then that's when I'll share what I think we should cut and then where we can increase.
No, I'd most wait until April seventh. I think we know the situation is changing daily. So there would be, in my opinion, no sense, since we still have time. And luckily, we were delayed, or the budget was delayed compared to our counterparts at the county of Blacksburg. Now we're gonna have to jump in with big cleavers and go at the budget again, instead of where it's been time long. But I'd rather wait until April seventh to see where everything's leading. Like it still gives us a little bit of extra time.
See if we have any clearer vision in the...
Right, because things are changing every day.
It is, it is changing every day.
At this point, I also, we were told to include the budget by accounts in the show, after that was at the finance committee in early February. So of course, we didn't necessarily know of the, the outcome of the COVID-19 virus. Like Val said, I think we can't really necessarily recommend going forward in good faith, although if you're going to fund it, you'd have to include it in your budget.
Right.
And he may have said that, but I would have supported it at that time too. But it's a different conversation, and we're gonna have another conversation in a couple of months and a couple of months after that now. And hopefully we'll spring back from that. But I think we all realize that the landscape has changed, and it's our responsibility to make the best decisions we can with the best information we can, uh, as we go along. But I think we're, I think it's a great presentation. Go back out. I know I'm gonna vote differently on the community support now as a starting point. And then I, I think each of us should come on April seventh, watching what's going on in our world, you know, looking at what's happening in, in our community, and, and then come back with a, a specific list of things that we would, that are, that are important to us from the budget. And then that's probably the best starting point, is have some specifics and not, uh, and then just compare notes on those specifics, see if there's commonalities, if, if only one person feels this or everyone feels that. But if we come with specifics, it'll be easier to, to plow through this in a productive way.
So I guess during that meeting is when we're gonna discuss every single item of the budget, correct? And we may be cutting out, out a lot of the things that we were to pay for the, for, for things that we're gonna do this year, correct?
And that's the key, isn't we? And that's what a work session is for. Anything that's projected, even this right here, that's why we have work sessions, so that the majority can say, yes, we want that out now. Yes, we want that still included, i.e. the fire truck that's already on order, which we put off for a couple of years. And, you know, those are decisions we'll make as a majority, as a group, not just one person.
Does the company know that we're thinking about cutting back on Tru-Mon Vision and...
I did talk, contact property construction, made them aware of, and obviously they're aware of the situation with the county and the virus. Uh, you know, basically, I asked them to consider options for either delaying the park potentially a year or trying to scale the park back to maybe a phase one A rather than complete phase one.
Well, I think the biggest expense we have, anything, anything we're gonna do over there is five million dollars to move the dirt. So that seems like...
I'm a big, I'm a huge, you know, I'm a, obviously, a big proponent of the park, but that's not my vocabulary right now, honestly. And will it be six months from now? Possibly. Will it be a year from now? Possibly. That's all I could say. But I'll say, I'll go ahead and throw it out there that, uh, the park's not in my, in my vocabulary right now. But will it be six months, a year, or, or sometime after that?
Would it be beneficial, since we are without any formal vote, but we have a lot of head nodding, to show us what the budget would be without the park figures in it? Because there was a million dollars in operation and...
Yeah, I wouldn't, I, I can probably just send out like that, uh, one cover page and the, and the charts, if that would be helpful, rather than, I don't want to put everything together again until we have at least a majority, because it changes everything in the whole budget and going through and reviewing all of those things. But I could pull the park out, um, pull that out of the forecast and pull the debt payment out and just show you what that looks like.
Or you can give us a ballpark figure. I don't know that I want to see a whole new budget myself.
No, I was thinking I would just give you those first couple pages.
Particular page. Yeah, just that particular, oh, in the presentation.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I can just pull out...
Right, that's exactly what I was...
That page right there.
That executive version. Yes, perfect.
And maybe just the revenue and the, well, you wouldn't need the revenue, it's kinda change the revenue numbers that way.
So it may even improve the bottom line of what we have left over, uh, that thirty-nine point seven percent.
It's actually not gonna change those numbers substantially, because it's covered with the debt. So what it's gonna take out is, um, three hundred and somewhat thousand in debt service payments that are in the budget?
That's what I was thinking, it'd be hundreds of thousands, not millions.
Yeah, because the, the, the nine million that's in there for the acquisition of the, for construction of the park is being covered by nine million dollars in debt service. So it kind of is a wash.
Right.
But there is a substantial increase in the recreation department budget, which, for that part, which I think needs to be reflected downward.
Good point, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a very good point.
At least in, in this, in twenty twenty-one, there's one debt service payment. And then when you get to the forecasting that goes out five years, there's a lot of impact on that.
But I'm, but I'm saying the, the, the personnel expenses for the rec department was quite significant with this, with the park projected in there. I do believe there was a hundred thou, a couple hundred thousand in...
They wouldn't come online until next, even if we did.
Yeah, there was, the only increase in the Parks and Rec for the park for this year was the debt service payment, because once you pull the debt, you gotta start doing debt service. But there was no operational cost in twenty twenty-one, but there are in the forecasts, for the five-year forecasts in the back. There's a huge, there's a huge impact on those, because that brings in the operational costs and the revenues and all of the debt service. So it has a huge impact on that.
Val, what kind of, uh, general fund operating expense did that drop at all with the closure of the aquatic center or rec center?
The revenues dropped a bit, yeah.
But not the expense of the operations?
Um, she hasn't really sent me those. We're still keeping a lot of the part-time people there cleaning and doing some of the works and stuff, but a lot of them aren't working. A lot of them are students who are no longer here. I don't have a good estimate from them yet as to, because most of their, their salary people are still on board, but their part-time wage workers are not, and I don't have a good projection from them at this time.
I think Terry told us that they're hoping during this, the shutdown period, they'll be able to do a lot of the maintenance that they, that they normally do in the late summer. When they shut the aquatic center for two weeks, hopefully that'll all be done and they won't need to shut it down for the two weeks.
Yeah.
That's what I, that's what I'm hearing at this point, is kind of a goal. Makes sense.
Yeah, and Parks and Rec's doing the same. I mean, they're painting the weight room and doing different things, so they're keeping people busy and employed and...
And I guess we can always move them around too as well as needed, right? To, to work on the cooling centers or whatever is needed in case this gets worse, correct?
Well, I believe that's Randy's responsibility, if some person did not count this.
You know, I, I do have plans to potentially use some staff for, say, fall cleanup, for example, sorry, spring, spring cleanup. Uh, I expect it'll probably be a little overburdened, which this year considering how many people are probably cleaning out the garages. Also, all the work staff is kind of taxed right now anyhow. That's just kind of one, one example. Also, like I say, to keep them busy and try and keep parks sanitized and do the work like paint, uh, weight rooms. Uh, aquatics, as, as we mentioned, are basically going ahead and doing the August shutdown that they're doing, doing next week.
Right, and I would encourage that you, the employees that aren't, uh, you know, that are at our rec facility, who are getting paid, are still hitting those parks, because that's where people are going.
Yes.
And picking up trash on the Huckleberry. My expectation, I mean, me personally, is I would expect for the parks to be cleaned at least bi-weekly.
We're, we're cleaning, we're cleaning weekly. Uh, today, we did the, uh, the, uh, College Street Park, downtown park, and we did the Gwana's Park.
Is that where the sign was up that said the park is closed?
Yes, that's why it was closed, it was closed for this extension.
Okay.
I will say, I think the Huckleberry Trail is probably being used by far more than it ever has been, honestly.
Can we start charging a toll?
Yeah, but I'm gonna tell you, it's, it's appreciated. I mean, people still need to get out and, you know, keep their social distance, but people still need to get outside.
And they know they have to get out now because we don't know what's gonna happen in two weeks or in another week, so...
Going back to the, uh, Truman Wilson, and I think it's good what we're, we're doing here. But I'm just wondering, they have an accountant too, and I'm wondering if they haven't already had a meeting and they have said Christianburg is gonna pay us nine million dollars this year, and now all of a sudden, that's gone. I'm just wondering about how their balance sheet is going, and maybe if we could do something, you know, to keep it going and give a little bit of money to them to, to help their, this is just an idea, I'm throwing that out.
I think the only thing that we have guaranteed Falconers, who would pay them that one million dollars to design the park, there was never any other talk about an additional nine million, because it's not approved and it's not presented yet. So they're, they're, they know where they are.
So you don't think their balance sheet, that they have planned on that?
Well, our, our concerns should not be whether they're meeting their payroll. I mean, that's their concern. I mean, we paid them a million dollars to develop the park. I'm not gonna go to them and say, hey, you want another half a million to stay in business. They, they're a professional business. They're figuring it out as it goes, and they're struggling just like we're struggling.
They're always struggling. Mr. Harper, you were a teacher, right?
Yes.
So one of the things that will be needed in the future too is the schools. The Pepper's Ferry Road, uh, schools are, you know, are running out of capacity for the students and everything. If anything, the Wilson property will be a very good property to have a middle school, well, not a middle school, the elementary school and the primary school. And then we can have the county give us the primary school, elementary school properties for us to have a nice park downtown, closer to the downtown. And that would really increase the people coming down tours this side of town instead of all the way to Pepper's Ferry Road. But that's just...
Any other questions for Val? Thank you. We have citizens' comments, where citizens may come and express concerns, like comments or questions. You have, uh, two minutes, three minutes, name, address, phone number, anybody here to address council?
We do have one written comment that's at all your seats that we received.
Hearing note one, I will close the citizens' comments section. Under committee reports, uh, I'm not sure we've had any committee meetings in the last two or three weeks, haven't. And I, and I wonder, without throwing them too far under the bus, because I kind of warned them anyway, if we might have, uh, if this is a good time maybe to have Chief Hanks and Chief Sisson to update us on this vast emergency thing we've been dealing with for the last fourteen days. Is that a possibility? I mean, I know there's some things that are still in the works that we can't commit on yet, but to, I think it's, it would be good for the council and good for the citizens looking in to, to see how far ahead we are on the Richter scale of this thing.
I'd like to get, uh, Chief Coils' input on this. No, but you're, I'm not really asking for the committee. I'd like to get each one of the chiefs their input.
We can have him at the next meeting, at a different meeting, Henry, he's, he's not here.
I think that's a, that's a, you know, he's a gronser rescue.
Well, that, that, that's true, but these have been in the whole planning of the entire regional thing. So Mark, Billy?
And while you're at it, can you please tell us and make sure that, um, I would like to really know if you guys have the protective gear to protect all of your, um, people for this virus, as far as gloves and masks and anything that is needed for, for you guys to protect yourselves?
Yeah, I can do that. Okay, so we, uh, Chief Sisson and I have been part of the, uh, Euro Valley Health Task Force that was put together many days ago, coming on the weekend, if it's time longer to come. We meet daily, nine-thirty to eleven-thirty every day. That's with the leaders of, uh, the chiefs of police, Blacksburg, Christianburg, the sheriff. Blacksburg, Christiansburg, the sheriff, the health department, uh, a joint information group that includes Melissa, uh, the PIOs for the town of Blacksburg, the PIOs for the county, the PIOs for the health department. Uh, we're in constant communication with VDM, Virginia Department of Emergency Management. We declare a local emergency here, uh, because we are our own entity here. Montgomery County and the town of Blacksburg declared together because Montgomery, or the town of Blacksburg does not have an emergency manager, so they fell under the, uh, header of Montgomery County. Constant communication with VDM, the Department of Health. In reference to PPE, PPE nationwide is very, very limited. The president has announced today, you know, that there are PPEs coming. Now, my personal thought on PPE, it's going to go to the higher affected areas before we see it. We're in pretty good shape right now for PPE. Talked to Chief Cole this afternoon, he gave me a rundown of what he had, uh, what he's still in need of. We made those requests through VDM, uh, but we're still needing more PPE, uh, to carry us out for an extended period of time. But like I said, I feel like realistically, this will receive. I think PPE nationwide is limited. Supposed to be massive truckloads and trainloads and plane loads and everything else coming, but how soon will we see it? I still think it's two weeks out, if not longer. But right now, we're really, we're in pretty good shape right now.
I, I will add to that, that regionally, and this has been documented by VDM at the Richmond level, that we are ahead of any location in Virginia, and that includes Northern Virginia, Richmond, uh, Roanoke, anywhere. This task force, the development of this task force early on is very essential to the steps that we're taking now and some of the aggressive steps that will be taken as a community in the next week or two. When you start talking about community testing, which, you know, we do not have community spread in New River Valley, which is very much a positive for us, like they do in the Dade City County and Arlington and Northern Virginia. Uh, but we're ahead of that curve. We have the Health Department Director, who in my opinion is phenomenal. She is at our nine-thirty meeting every day. Uh, this task force doesn't need Monday through Friday. We're, we're working seven days a week, and we likely will be for the next month or two. Uh, but that, this is what we're built for, you know. You have a, you know, you have a phenomenal emergency service manager who's been in the game for many years, that's Chief Hanks, uh, who has directed us in, you know, the ways we should go. But we also have the other key players at the table, and, um, it's what we do. I mean, this is what we're built for, we're gonna make it happen regionally, and, um, that's just what it is. We're gonna, whatever gets thrown to us, we're gonna overcome it, um, because we have great relationships regionally, which has been displayed right now with this task force that's developed.
And we've, we've proven that over and over again, you know, started back with the shootings at Virginia Tech, with the Ray shadow, the shootings at the mall. We have great regional support, uh, everybody's a team player. It's not about personalities, it's not about localities, it's about what we're going to do for the community and how we're gonna protect the community. A lot of planning, a lot of planning has gone into this, uh, you know, so much that, that, like Chief Sisson said, you know, we are ramping up to be able to do on-site testing. Uh, when we're, when the test kits are available, we're ready to deploy the assets that we have put in place. It's assets that we have logistically in place right now, and, uh, we'll be ready to do some, some, you know, drive-through testing once the test kits are available. That's the big problem right now, is the shortage of test kits. Like I said earlier, I think the most high-risk localities are probably going to get those, the majority of those test kits first. But, uh, we, we feel relatively certain that within the next week or two, we're gonna have some kits available and we can immobilize and set up, and it'll happen very rapidly. Uh, but right now, you know, we encourage, uh, all the citizens, if you have an issue, or you think you have a cold, or you think you could have this virus, to contact the Virginia Department of Health, that their hotline number, uh, they'll run you through a questionnaire and, and point you in the right direction as far as what you need to do for the immediate time right now. But, uh, a lot of work, seven days a week, uh, twelve, sixteen-hour days. But we have a phenomenal team, uh, throughout our region. I'm proud to be part of it, I'm proud to sit down with these people every morning, uh, because we have, I think, the best. We, I know we have the only plan in southwest Virginia, uh, right now, that comes from VDM. VDM says we're all of them, but just, just prepared right now, so feel good about it. We're gonna get through it.
Excellent report.
Thank you, you guys.
Did I hear that somebody in Radford, uh, came out positive today?
We have a positive case in Radford, uh, that, uh, Department of Health announced this afternoon. I believe it was serious enough for the person to be hospitalized, but somehow, self-hormoned, you know.
They'll say hello?
Yeah, they're, they're.
Okay.
Can I ask you something too? Is there a way that, I, I know this will be probably not very good for the people, but do you think that, is there a way, um, and will it make it better for you guys? If we stop for at least a couple weeks, uh, any house fires that people may be having fires in their backyards and things like that, so you guys can continue to worry about what's really going on right now instead of worrying about maybe somebody putting up a fire in their backyard and now having to deal with that?
Yeah, if you talk about controlled burns or fires they may have, just to burn off brush and debris, you know, we can encourage them, uh, put this stuff out for the spring cleanup. Uh, believe it or not, our call volume is really low right now, probably the lowest it's been.
Do we still have the burn ban?
Burn ban isn't, statewide burn ban is in effect, you have to wait till after four P M. to burn, has to be out by midnight. Uh, but our call volume, we are, we are really down here, it's sort of amazing. Everybody's staying at home like they should be. So our call volume is down, and, you know, that reflects that, that, that the citizens are doing what they should be doing. Are about to, about to mount some traffic on our end that we're accustomed to. I think, uh, everybody just weathered the storm, they go, we're gonna be okay, we're gonna get this, through this thing as a community, like we're gonna be good.
I guess you can always go back and change those rules to, uh.
Sure, sure, if we see, if we see necessary, if we, you know, something happens and things really ramp up and we need to change stuff, we can change it. We're, we're allowed to do that by law.
How are the rescue calls, are they down as well?
You know, I'm not sure, Councilor Shawalter, uh, seems like to me like they are, because I listen, you know. I don't really pay close attention to the calls, but it seems like to me like they may be down. I don't, I think, I think as a region, I think our calls are down right now, but I'm not, I couldn't give you the numbers, I don't, I'm not sure.
So just, what you know. Randy usually gets those out to us, it's probably something I'm missing.
Yeah.
What are the weekly updates?
Uh, but you're recommending that i- if you show any symptoms, instead of jumping in the car and running straight to the emergency room, call, uh, the, the New River Valley Department of Health, Power, and Health.
And that, that message has been out. We've been pushing that message since day one, and the ERs are reporting daily for nine-thirty meeting, that they are down forty percent of the ERs. Which means we're being socially responsible as a community, uh, and keeping that resource open. So, our joint communication efforts are working.
Where is that calling center at, for the two-eleven phone call center?
I'm not familiar with the two-eleven center, I don't know where that's at.
Isn't it, isn't it the two, yeah, I mean, it's two-eleven.
I'm not sure if that's local or if that's away from here, but what we're recommending in the New River Valley is to call the Virginia Department of Health hotline. I think we may have it on the website, and, uh, it's, we've been pushing that out for two weeks. This is the first call we need to make, and, and it's working, because like Chief Sisson said, the hospitals are showing great decreased numbers, uh, people coming into the ER. We're trying to push them away from the ER, that's why we wanted to call that health department. Keep the hospital beds open, keep the ERs open. If this thing gets really out of control, then the hospitals are ready for it. Uh, but, uh, great, you know, we have a representative from each hospital on this task force, and they're in these meetings every morning. Uh, it's just a tremendous, tremendous regional effort.
Thank you, you guys.
You probably can't get a guess on this, but if you're gonna try to guess, what percentage you think, uh, of the people around here that get?
I, um, I, I would even.
I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even attempt to guess.
Doctor Bissel with the Health Department might give you a calculated guess, but I don't think she would, uh, just the discussions we've had, you know, over the past few days. You don't know, if people be socially responsible, stay at home, social distance. He sits beside me every day, so he's got it, not got it, but, uh, I think, I think everybody's doing the right thing. Community is really coming together. Sure, our businesses are struggling right now in town, our private-owned businesses are struggling in town right now. We need to, we need to assure them, you know, that, that, uh, everything's gonna be okay. And a lot of our businesses were responsible before the shutdown even happened, they just went on and shut down, uh, which, which is big, I think that's huge for a community to do that, uh, but we're ready, you know, I'll be ready for it to come back.
Chief, are the universities involved in that?
Yes, Disney Tech, uh, Virginia Tech has representation on the board also, or on the task force, and, and they're with us every day. Virginia Tech PD is with us every day, uh, great part. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it. Discussion in action by mayor and council. Conditional use request for Cole Show's Amusements Company Incorporated, applicant for property owned by Rockstep Christiansburg LLC for a carnival seven-eighty-two New River Valley, New River Road. The B-three General Business zoning district public hearing was held March the tenth, Will?
Yes, so, Mr. Cole's here, um, been in touch with them as well as the mall. In your updated cover letter with the packet, there were visiting conditions that were recommended by the planning commission? That was really before this happened, um, so we don't generally give sort of staff recommendations, but given the circumstances, um, I'm essentially suggesting, and, uh, and Cole and the mall are agreeable to this, that maybe at your all's discretion, that, that number fifteen condition that really did specify the dates for the carnival, date between April and May, um, did that be amended so in the event that carnival can't take place, um, at that date, that it be allowed to take place at a future date for a similar date range?
I'm fine with that, I make a conditional, we recommend, or I'll, uh, make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit with the, uh, suggested revision of an open date in the future later this year.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussions?
Well, I understand, if, if, when you do decide to come in, you'll, you'll contact the mall and make sure it's all right with them, and, you know, it's, it's in the middle of summer, next fall, whatever, so they, they know it's, it's coming, and, and that's a good time for them to.
Yes, sir, if it's not allowed, for whatever reason to proceed forth as currently scheduled, we'll give everybody plenty of advance notice for when we would like to come back and make sure that the date's agreeable to everyone.
And with this extended, or possible extended approval, don't need to come back for another public hearing or anything along those lines, it's, it's a good for you.
We're grateful that you came today too, thank you so much for showing up.
Yeah, more importantly, he doesn't pay to have me.
Right, so, any further discussions?
I'll just make a, to be very specific, uh, at the town manager's discretion, that date will be approved. Is that, so, yeah, I'll make that motion, or I'll amend my motion to be specific and say at the town manager's discretion, that date is whenever he says it can be.
I'll name one second.
Okay.
Can you be made, not just the manager, but also be spoken with the health group that they, they got going on right now as far as making sure that everybody's good with it?
Well, the town, uh, the, uh, police chief and the fire chief, they all report to Mr. Wingfield, so I'm sure that he's going to consult with them.
He'll be in contact, I'm sure. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
These unanimous, thank you. Uh, resolution adopting, adopting temporary tax relief measures for hospitality businesses. Mr. Warren, somebody got the slides on that thing?
The resolution was in your packet, uh, we do not have a slide, but it is the, uh, it is the three provisions uh, that would be typically, if, um, restaurants and hotels were to pay on time, that they would have a, an extended discount from three percent to ten percent. And then any collections for the months of March and April would be extended ninety days past the due date. And those are the three provisions I refer you to with this resolution.
I read that, and I'd like to make it three months. Uh, this is really a cash flow. Val, you're an accountant, but I, I see this as a cash flow issue. And having talked to some restaurateurs here in the community, without mentioning names this last week, it's a cash flow issue. And we're in a better situation to handle a cash flow issue than they are right now. So I would propose that we extend that by one month, uh.
March, April, and May?
Correct, and then extend the ninety days to a hundred and twenty days.
Yes.
The, if you're, if you pay within a hundred, uh, the ninety-day stipulation was if you're late payments within, well, I guess that would, that would move forward with that.
No interest or penalties would apply if paid within ninety days of whatever the due date was.
Okay, so that, that takes care of itself, that's sec, that's self.
Just rotating on.
Okay, then I, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the request, but extend it by one month.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second, discussions?
Just want to make one point of clarity, uh, Val, when I discuss this, and basically what we mean by the, the additional discount for the time of payment is basically paying the March meals tax in April.
Right.
And, and not the, the ninety days later.
Any discussion, do I have a motion in a second, yes?
That's only for the discount.
Oh, for the discount, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Nice to hear that.
And, and we can handle this all right, Val, I mean, I think it's wonderful that we're helping these restaurants out, but, I mean, it's not gonna put us underwater.
No.
We have better cash flow than they do right now.
Yeah, I agree.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you, that does, that is meals and lodging, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Very good, thank you. But, uh, resolution adopting temporary utility billing measures for coronavirus emergency response.
I'll make a motion that we, um, resolve to adopt the temporary utility billing measure for coronavirus emergency services.
I second that.
Motion in a second, any discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
We're agreeable bunch tonight, very good. Consent to Director of Emergency Management Declaration of Local Emergency.
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent to Director of Emergency Management Declaration of Local Emergency.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Ordnance in according with Code of Virginia, section fifteen-point-two-dash-one-four-one-three, confirming the declaration of the local emergency and providing for the county, for the continuity of government.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Discussions? Want you, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Staff reports, town manager?
I think you've already heard a lot of this, but I'll just, I'll go ahead and mention, of course, we do have the first confirmed case here in New River Valley at Radford Hospital, a graduate student. Also, as I mentioned, we have a public task force active and teams and members of that. They've established a command center at the newer community college at the mall. Also, there, we do have plans for a test center when. When kits arrive, we anticipate we probably have that lobbed the next day.
Very good.
When do you expect to have the, your test lab?
I can't answer that.
I'm not sure the state can answer that. It just won't mark any of the candidates. But when it happens, we'll be ready, in very short notice. Mr. Roddy?
Nothing to report here.
Thank you. Any other staff? Of course, I know you've been on top of these meetings, you're getting stuff out on the website. I, I appreciate that very much. And council reports, uh, gosh, Ms. Hicks?
I would really, really like for us to think outside the box and help, um, the restaurant businesses and other businesses. Not just the recommendation we just did tonight, or the, what we just passed tonight, but at least try to have a meal tax decrease for the next year and the meal stops. And also, uh, maybe, um, for you guys to really think about stopping the increase in the water rates for the next year. I think everybody's suffering right now. I don't think too many people right now can say that, um, this coronavirus has not affected them personally. And so, I think we really have to look at, um, everybody and just, you know, tell them, hey, we're here for you. Because in reality, they are gonna be there for us the rest of our existence, so.
Mr. Bishop? Mr. George? Mr. Stipes?
A brief comment. Like to say that, uh, what we've heard tonight from our emergency respond, first responders and so forth, there's two things that are on my mind. Each of us at council, each of us in this room, and each of our citizens is actually, has a chance to shape the future here. And what we do today is shaping outcomes a week, in two weeks, in a month from now. We're seeing that everywhere. And so, that's really a strong power that each of us has, and each of us, our citizens have, to actually shape the future, uh, for the better, as we deal with this crisis together. And I'd also like to say, we're asked that the, the Lord bless and protect each family, each citizen in this town. And, uh, we, I, I believe that we should be praying for our community, and I'll ask, uh, openly for the Lord to, to bless and protect each citizen and family in our, in our community as we deal with this together. And that was an outstanding presentation by the both of you gentlemen this evening, and I'm, I'm all, actually, giddy to hear just how much you're doing, so thank you very much.
Mr. Hopper?
Yeah, I'm gonna sort of echo what he said, and it just makes me feel so good to know the people that we have working in this town, and how on top of it you guys are. And, uh, it just, uh, makes me feel proud to be a resident of this town, and knowing that, uh, protection and the, the work that you people are doing. And I'm talking to all of you right here in the room here, and I just want to say thank you.
Ms. Sachs?
Yes. I wanted to address my different attire tonight. Normally, I would never show up in a T-shirt. But I called the mayor and I said, hey, got an idea, what do you think? And he was all for it. So, we created a small video that we hope is gonna be ready this week to go public, and it's about being a hand-washing hero. So, we made light of it, you know, it's a rough situation.
Squirt guns were involved?
Squirt guns were involved, yes. You know, we got a few in on you, and you got a few in on me. But the whole idea was to just lighten the mood a little bit, and get the kids to learn how to wash their hands and be superheroes and, and have a good time with it. So, we've created our own hashtag, talking to Melissa a little bit, too, um, is, are you a hand-washing hero? So, the goal is we want all the kids out there, and all the parents and teenagers, just to have a good time with it, and maybe send us your videos of you being a hero, and it can be any hero you want to be. So, thanks for letting me wear a T-shirt tonight.
Thank you. I will say, I don't know if you've had a chance to notice it as you came through town, but the sign for the Vietnam Veterans, uh, Day is, War Veterans Day is there on the square where the Christmas tree is. We put it up this morning. Would like to thank Marissa and Lugo Hub for donating the sign to us, which, uh, we were having it, we had it priced anywhere from a hundred and sixty to about two hundred and eighty dollars. So, this, I, I do appreciate that. The, uh, I have submitted the, uh, I submitted copies of the proclamation to all of you tonight. I didn't have anybody call me back and say, you're crazy, so I assume we're good to go with it.
It's very nice.
It was nice.
So, that's, uh, that's pretty good. I, I think that, uh, it'll work. I, I'd, I'd love to have been able to have some type of a small celebration, but that's just, that's out of the way right now. And as soon as the day's over, we'll get the sign down, and we'll keep it here in town, so that, here in the office, so we can do this. And it is March twenty-ninth of every year. So, very good. Any other business to come for council? Just call, thank you for enduring us tonight. If not-
Mike, I would like to say, I do appreciate what you guys are doing on this bit, huh? I do appreciate it.
Well, we did it. The council did it. We're adjourned.